Need to put your full name, your address, and...
Okay.
Okay?
You could have...
Is there two of you?
Yes.
So they need, you need... Are you gonna come up together?
Same, okay, so same row?
No, are you gonna come up together?
Yes.
Okay, so what's your name?
Tajine Shiloh Evans.
Tajine Shiloh Evans.
Because he needs to sign on the same row as me?
If he's, well, he can sign up right here, but he needs to sign in too.
Sign up also.
Do we're both together, huh?
Yeah. Because we're both part of the same club, and I'm vice president, you're the president.
We're gonna say the same thing.
No, not when you're... There's multiple points to cover.
So what, she wanna go back and forth?
Yes.
So what, would I come up at a, as a, at a different time than him?
Yeah, you can come up together, it's just, uh, he may call you, I'll tell you that you're gonna come up, you wanna come.
On the right, uh-huh. Okay. Yep, yep. I'll call this the meeting to order on Monday, October the 16th, 2017. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Reverend Whit Martin from Smyrna First United Methodist Church. He's gonna come forth this time and lead, uh, give our invocation, and also lead us in the pledge of flag, so everybody please rise.
Mister Mayor, City Council, thank y'all so much, fellow guests, thank y'all for letting me be here to open up tonight. If you would, let's bow in reverence this evening. Lord, we give you thanks today for the city of Smyrna. And we are grateful for the people that we have the opportunity to serve. We're grateful for the leaders that you have raised up to watch over our community, and we ask tonight that you will grant wisdom and discernment in the business that is at hand. We ask that you will develop within each of us a deeper understanding of the needs that are around us, raise up the faith community, the schools, all of our administrators, to lead with our city leaders, and bring fruit to all of our efforts. It's your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those folks that are looking for a church, or a new church, or want to make a change, I'm sure the folks at First Methodist would love to have you. 1315 Concord Road, thank you very much, Whit, for coming tonight. Uh, agenda changes, we have none under item three, the mayoral report. We have a proclamation, 2017-387, a proclamation recognition of respect for firefighters. Councilmember Derek Norton will read that, and I think we got some folks from the Optimist Club, Betty Turley, anybody else, Betty?
This is our new president.
I'll bring that, bring the president up on up, and I see Roy Acre's in the background, Chief Acre, if you want to come forward.
Yeah, this is Ashley Womby, he's our new president for the new term, which started the first of October.
Okay, so he's been in office fifteen, sixteen days.
No, he's been there longer than that.
Oh, has he?
He just took over as president.
Oh, we're glad to have you. I think Councilmember Derek Norton has a proclamation to read and present that to you.
I do, thank you, Mister Mayor, and we, we appreciate everything that our firefighters do for us every day, and, uh, thank you for having this breakfast and this event, and I'll, um, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Respect for firefighters by the mayor of the city of Smyrna. Whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimist Club believe that a firm commitment to the safety of the citizens of Smyrna in Cobb County is a fundamental responsibility, and whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimist Club recognize that, in addition to firefighting duties, fire department personnel provide emergency medical service administering basic life support to help preserve life until more advanced treatment can be provided, and thereby significantly reducing deaths and disabling injuries. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimist Club recognize that fire inspection duties performed by the fire department personnel are a powerful proactive measure which prevent a great amount of property damage, injury, and death, year after year. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimist Club annually recognize and honor the members of the Smyrna Fire Department and other public safety professionals who risk their lives to help safeguard the welfare and property of citizens, and continue to support programs aimed at raising public awareness of the importance of fire safety, now I, A. Max Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim October 13th, 2017 as Respect for Firefighters Day, and ask all citizens of the Smyrna area to join the members of the Smyrna Optimist Club in expressing thanks to the members of the Smyrna Fire Department for the invaluable service they perform for the community. And I know this was last Friday, but I hope each and every one of you will take time out of your day to, to thank a firefighter for what they do.
Can I say a few words?
You sure can.
Okay, I proudly accept this proclamation on behalf of the Smyrna Optimists. I'm gonna ask everyone to join the Optimists, and last Friday was a respect for firefighters, but every day should be respect for fire, people of, of the fire department. And, uh, okay, I got a few, few other words. Uh, Max, I won't be bothering you anymore, because I'm, I'm moving to Smyrna, and I thank you for all the years that you've issued this proclamation, but I won't forget Smyrna, because I love Smyrna. But I'm moving closer to my daughter, five minutes from her, she's been trying to get me to do this for two years, so I finally took her up on it.
Well, we, we will miss you, Betty, and you have been, uh, she's been a bulldog with these proclamations. She will not let it go, and she always says, "I expect to see you Friday morning at seven o'clock for breakfast," and, uh, I know I disappointed her a lot, because I...
I had to worry this Friday, because, because we had the breakfast last Friday.
Oh, I missed it.
But I'm sure that, uh, everyone from the Optimists would gladly welcome you if you were to come. And if anybody wants to become a Smyrna Optimist, I'm sure our new president will accept anyone that wants to join.
You wanna say something, or anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, my voice isn't what it should be.
Right.
And after all, we know, Miss Betty, how could I follow that?
That's, yeah, Chief Acre.
I'd just like to say on behalf of the Smyrna Fire Department, but first of all, nobody checked with me to see if you, if it was okay for you to move. I don't, I don't like that.
I'm sorry, Chief.
But, and seriously, I just wanted to say thank you to, to, to Miss Betty, and to the Smyrna Optimists, and to this council for every year for this proclamation, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and Betty, I notify the Kennesaw authorities that you're moving up there.
Chief, Chief Acre, since we usually present this at our breakfast, I proudly, uh, give you this proclamation. You can put, well, some of the others that you have.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Thank you, Betty.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Uh, item B on the, uh, mayoral report is to recognize the Campbell High School varsity softball team, state playoff participants for the first time ever in the program's history, and this is the girls' varsity softball team. Uh, Coach Josh Kimball is there somewhere, Josh, I'm gonna let you come up and let you introduce the girls, if you can, and tell us a little bit about your season. I know that, uh, whenever I walk across the back of the parking lot and see Tim Williams, who was our solicitor, he just goes on and on and on about the softball team. And I promised him I would make it to a game, and I didn't, but, uh, believe me, he has kept me in, in, up to date on what was going on, and he doesn't just talk about his daughter, he talks about all the girls, so, um, I'm gonna give you the floor, let you recognize those folks that are here, and, uh, we'll go from there, Josh.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, your 2017, 2018 Campbell varsity softball team, I'll start with the ninth graders, if you don't mind, Mister Mayor. We have, uh, Tamaya Caldwell.
You can stand up.
Adrian Bradley. Bella Galloway. Anzley Roberts. And Miss Lyric Love. Uh, next I have our 10th graders, which would be Joy Tierlick. And Jessie Ray. And our juniors are Lindsey Seer. Emma Dew. Annabelle Sanchez. Uh, Geo Eli. And, uh, the one you heard the most about, Mary Williams. Uh, our two seniors are Maddie Kreider. And, uh, we have one four-year senior, Mister Mayor, and that's Paige O'Rourke. I know the girls are excited to be here, and we thank all of you for your support. Uh, thank you, Mister Norton, for your continued support of the program, and, uh, we're just, uh, happy to get where we're at and excited to get further.
And this is, uh, this is fast-pitched softball, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, but I guess I have heard a lot about the team and through, uh, Tim Williams, and, uh, we're proud of y'all's success and to making it to the state playoffs, that's quite an accomplishment, and I look forward to y'all being up here next year, except for the two, you got two seniors in that aisle?
Oh, we have, yes, two seniors, yes, sir.
Yep.
And I forgot to mention my coaches.
That's a good, that's why I'm giving you this little wiggle room.
I appreciate you stalling for me. Um, our coach is, uh, he's not here with us right now, is Coach James Gwynn, he's the basketball coach, you may have heard him. Um, Coach Richard Holmes. And Coach Maya Field, who is a, uh, Campbell alumni, she's Campbell alumni, so we're happy to have her.
Well, that's good, and who's your photographer back there?
I was gonna say Mister Seer, because he's usually with us, but it's, I think it's Mister Scott Ray.
Good deal. Well, thank y'all so much, and congratulations for that, uh, making the state playoffs.
We appreciate it.
I want to let you know, my, my daughter played on the first fast-pitched softball at a Campbell. And I told the council this the other night, we did not win a game. I don't think we scored a run, so congratulations, y'all have come a long way.
Thank you, and, uh, thank your daughter for starting all this, because we, we try to talk about our legacy, so thank your daughter for starting it all for us.
Good deal. Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate it.
Uh, also, just to, um, remind folks, there is an election November the 7th. Um, there's actually three seats, uh, one is to fill the seat Ward Three. Uh, Councilmember Terry Nullwich, who resigned her seat to run for a statehouse seat. Um, I'm not sure, I think her name's supposed to be on the ballot. Uh, there's also eight candidates running for the state senate position, vacated by Hunter Hill, who was, uh, both, Hunter Hill and Stacy Evans are running for governor. Um, that election's November 7th, and I'm, I'm gonna let anyone that's, that's running for any of those offices, any of those seats, now, um, if there's a lot of y'all, I can't tell y'all, y'all are all mixed up, I tell you what, folks, but, um, I, I give you about thirty seconds to come up and, uh, tell us who you are and what seat you're running for, if you, if you want to during the mayoral reports. Anybody running for office that would like to come forward and, um, identify themselves, and if you don't have to, but, uh, okay, good deal. Just remind everybody, please vote on November the 7th, I think the polls opened up. Terry, you wanna, I know you're gonna announce that at the end of the meeting.
I will announce it at the end of the meeting, I can do it now if you'd like.
Well, you can, let's get a double dose of, uh...
Okay, the, uh, all the polls will be open on November the 7th, all seven polls for, uh, for the city of Smyrna. Now, all, the only poll that will be open for the Ward Three election will be the Community Center. So everyone will have to vote at the Community Center for, on November the 7th. We have advance voting, it started today. It, that's November the six, I mean, October the 16th through the, November the 3rd, and then early voting begins on the 28th of October through November the 3rd, and that will be, um, at the Community Center. Advance voting will be at Mayor, on Whitlock, Whitlock Avenue with Cobb County elections. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move into the regular portion of our agenda, item four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. A is Resolution 2017-28-18, public hearing approval of a resolution authorizing the adoption of the city of Smyrna 2040 Comprehensive Plan, Community Development. Miss Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Our Community Development Department is seeking approval of a resolution authorizing the adoption of the city of Smyrna's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan for the city of Smyrna is mandated by the Georgia Planning Act 634. This act requires that each jurisdiction in the state prepare and implement a comprehensive plan, which is reviewed by the Regional Development Commission. There are several components that comprise the Comprehensive Plan. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan was reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, and the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, in August of 2017. Community Development received comments from both ARC and DCA regarding the document, and, uh, the necessary changes suggested for completion have been, have, the suggested changes have been completed, pardon me. Um, our Community Development staff recommends approval, so therefore I'm gonna turn it over to Ken Sudrith, our Community Development Director.
We do have a, uh, short presentation, uh, by Jacobs, uh, who is our consultant on this, but before I hand it off to Megan, who you know to do that, I'd like to thank the, personally, uh, my staff, and in particular Rusty Martin, for all the hard work he's done in guiding this, but also other staff members within the city. This is not just a community development document, we were the ones that organized and put it together, but other departments were involved, but, uh, I'd also specifically like to thank Jennifer Bennett, uh, Kelsey Scott, when she was here, was involved, Eric Randall, uh, has participated in the stuff, and has greatly helped us, so, uh, there are other staff people, I'm sure, that I haven't mentioned and forgotten about, but, uh, please know that I am sincere when I say thank you to the rest of staff. Uh, and with that in mind, I will hand it off to Megan to do a quick, uh, presentation for you.
If this'll pull up. Okay, perfect. Um, hi, Mayor Bacon, and council, and community members, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, I am excited to be here on hopefully Adoption Day, after about a year-long process with this Comprehensive Plan. Just a few final details to go over and answer any questions that you or the community may have. As Miss Jones mentioned earlier, we have gotten approval from the Regional Commission and from the state, so the final step in the adoption of this plan is approval from y'all as city council, and we hope that will happen tonight. So, the document overall is the umbrella policy document for the city of Smyrna. It covers issues such as land use, transportation, housing, economic development, and other quality of life issues, and it's organized into the city's needs and opportunities, its vision and priorities, and then some key action steps to make sure that those visions are made into a reality. So this document is all posted online, and I'll put the URL up later for anyone who'd like to take a look at it. But we identified several priority needs and opportunities, things like making sure infill development is compatible with its surroundings, how to leverage the SunTrust Park development, making sure that there's sufficient public art, and alternative transportation opportunities, all these things that are going to contribute to Smyrna's future. So, working with the community through several public meetings, we developed a new vision statement, which is going to guide this plan and future decisions, is based off of the previous vision plan. And we've made some key edits to the future land use map, which is the overall policy map guiding how land will be used in the future for things like rezoning decisions. So just a few changes in additional residential category. Um, you'll notice there's a new regional activity center in the area surrounding SunTrust Park, and things like adding the flood plain or private recreation and conservation to the map have also been included. And then the Community Work Program details how this vision that we've set out for this bright future for Smyrna will actually be executed. So it's broken down into several categories, make it manageable for staff, and organized in a timeline over a five-year period through 2022, prioritizing the action items that are really going to bring us closest to that vision, and establishing an anticipated budget for each of those. We also have a 100-day action plan, which we hope will get moving quickly, and so that we can really get a head start and build the momentum that we've gotten from the community on this. So if you'd like any more information about the plan, it's posted to the project website, guidesmyrna.com, and all of the materials are posted there for your review and download, and hopefully your use once this gets adopted. So does anyone have any questions about the plan overall?
Uh, th- this is a public hearing, um, anyone that'd like to make any public comment or ask any question concerning this, uh, Comprehensive, um, Plan, uh, we'll give you that opportunity at this time. Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, thank you, y'all, we appreciate it, and appreciate all your work on this throughout the process.
Thank you. Normally this would go to Councilmember Doug Stoner, who chairs the Community Development Committee. He is out of town in Portland, uh, at a transportation meeting. I'm gonna ask that Councilmember Ron Fennel, please address this issue, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I want to echo the voices that Ken Sudrith and the staff from Jacobs have indicated. Over the past year, a lot of people had their hands in the opportunity that we're presented with today for adopting our Comprehensive Plan, including many citizens who gave their input and guidance to the document as, as it was developed over the course of the year, both at the Jonquill Festival and at other public meetings, at the special meetings held and facilitated by our, our consultants, and so we appreciate every citizen who went online or came in person and contributed to this final document. Uh, we are proud of the, what the next couple of decades looks like for, looks like for Smyrna, based on the plan we've outlined in this document. And with that, Mister Mayor, I move approval of the resolution authorizing the adoption of the city of Smyrna 2040 Comprehensive Plan, uh, for Community Development.
We have a motion. Second. And a second by Mister Welch, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's prove five to zero. Thank you very much. Item five is privileged licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business. A, 2017-405, approval of Ward One appointment of Harrison Aiken to the Smyrna Tree Board to ful, to fulfill term to expire August of 2020. I'll just turn that straight over to Mister Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, this appointment is to replace Tom Bartlett, who was the Ward One representative and chair of the Tree Board, who's now my appointee to the Planning and Zoning Board, and, uh, Tom had great things to say about Harrison, Harrison has expressed interest. Tom said he would do a great job, um, went to Georgia Tech, and I said, okay, despite that, we'll go ahead and appoint him. Uh, so at this time, I'd like to, uh, move to approve item six, A, 2017-405, approval of the Ward One appointment of Harrison Aiken to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill term to expire August 2020.
A motion, a second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote.
And Harrison, thanks for being here tonight.
It's approved five to zero, thank you very much. Item seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Miss Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the October 2nd, 2017, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the October 2nd, 2017, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the September 28th, 2017, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the 2018 employee insurance providers and plans, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Item E, award RFP 18-003, South Cobb Drive sewer replacement to the lowest bidder, KM Davis Contracting Incorporated, for $181,126.35, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item F, award RFP 18-002, full-service janitorial contract to RL Commercial Systems for $166,987.44, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item G, approval of road closures on Saturday, November 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. from West Spring Street to Village Green Traffic Circle, and from Village Walk Bank Street to King Street Southeast. Veterans Day Ceremony will be taking place at Veterans Memorial Plaza with seating on Bank Street from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
We have a motion. We've got a motion to approve the consent agenda, Mister Fennel. Seconded by Mister Welch, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion. It's approved five, zero. Uh, excuse me, number nine is committee reports, we'll start tonight, Mister Derek Norton, Mister Norton.
No report tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Andrea Bluestein.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I would like to remind those of you in Ward Two that I am having a community meeting on, um, November the 4th, from eight, I mean, no, from eight to, 10 to 12, uh, at the Bronner Hall. Uh, I hope to see you there, we're gonna have some interesting people discussing various things, so please, if you can, come, thank you.
Mister Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, I just need to make an announcement that the Historical Society, which, um, hasn't met in some time, will meet this coming Thursday at 6:30 in the Community Center in the Jonquill Room. Um, anybody that's interested in, in joining up and, and helping the Historical Society, uh, please come, and we're looking for some volunteers to museum as well, so that'd be a good time to come and volunteer your services. 6:30 this Thursday in the Community Center at Jonquill, in, in the Community Center in the Jonquill Room. That's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Miss Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to announce to everyone about, um, something that's happening at the library this Saturday. There's gonna be a, a lecture for Julia Roberts, it's her, uh, it says, "Happy 50th Birthday, Julia Roberts." And for those of you that don't know, Julia Roberts is from Smyrna, Georgia, and she was born here in 1967, and, um, at, at this Saturday, the, October the 21st, from 2:00 to 3:00, in the Smyrna Library Meeting Room, there's gonna be a lecture, and the speaker is Dr. Jennifer Garland, and I just want to re- And I just wanna read this paragraph. It says, "In 2001, the film Oceans 11 introduced Julia Roberts as an ironic joke. She was already one of the biggest stars in the world, with a Best Actress Oscar for Erin Brockawitz, freshly added to her shelf. Born in Smyrna in 1967, Roberts shot to international fame in the late 1980s and early 90s. Her best-known films include box office hits like Still Magnolia in 1989, Pretty Woman in 1990, The Pelican Brief in 1993, and Notting Hill in 1999." And they'll look back at Julia Roberts' life and storied career as the four-time Oscar nominee reaches the mid-century mark this October. One of the films that they didn't mention was the first one I had ever seen with Julia Roberts in it, and that was Mystic Pizza. So, anyway, if y'all wanna go and hear about Julia and about her life, and there's a lot, actually, a lot of people here in Smyrna that went to school, high school with Julia, and that's pretty cool, too. So, and then the other thing I wanna mention is, on October the 28th and the 29th is the Jonquill Festival, and that invite y'all to come to that in the downtown. On the 28th, the morning of the 28th, there's a children's Halloween costume parade, and the registration begins at 8:30 in the rear parking lot of the Smyrna First Baptist Church on Church Street, and then the parade starts at 9:30. And then after that will be the festival for the next two following days. Thanks so much. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
No report for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Scott Andrews. Scott Cochran. Terry Graham. I don't know. You got anything? I forgot Tammy Sadler Jones.
On the subject of birthdays, I just wanna acknowledge our city attorney's birthday is tonight.
That's exactly right. Come up and slap him on your way out. Yeah, happy birthday. Why would you spend your birthday? You wanna go ahead and tell us one more time about the election? Terry?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let me pull it up. The, we will have Ward Three voting. We have seven, I mean, we have five candidates running for the Ward Three seat. And that election will be held on, for advanced voting, October the 16th, which began today, through November the 3rd, and will also include October the 28th, which is a Saturday. Early voting will begin October the 28th, which is a Saturday, October the 30th through November the 3rd. That will be held in the community center. There will also be voting for Senate District Six, and that will be held in all of the precincts in Smyrna on November the 7th. You can vote for advanced voting at the Whitlock Center, the elections, Whitlock Avenue for, at Cobb Elections, for advanced voting, and then the community center for the state senate seat 62, or District Six. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? Both of you want to go back to the mic? We have no show calls here, and we've got three folks signed up for citizens' input. Alec Backley, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
My first comment is, the city's spending $24 million on improving Windy Hill. When this was voted on two years ago by the taxpayers to have improvements, there were no details, cost, et cetera. What was, what is needed now by this council is to have a city town hall meeting. This is more than the park barn, and a lot of people are asking questions of what is going on and what is planned for that. And I hate to see it happen like Concord Road, where they had a town hall meeting after it was all finalized, and the citizens had no input on Concord Road. This city needs to have that town hall meeting. Mayor, you're way overdue to have a town hall meeting, so this would be perfect timing. I understand there's gonna be two bridges built for cars to go over to turn around. I find this a waste of money, and they're gonna be eyesores. That's only less than a mile from Windy Hill to Atlanta Road. But $24 million of taxpayer money, I strongly believe that open government is any chance you can to get the citizens' input on any project or issue, and this is certainly one for $24 million. And I hope that you can put it on billboards and pick a date and have it at the community center. Hopefully, it's not a rainy day with the problems over there with the leaky roof. But anyway, I've heard nothing from the city on asking anybody in the whole city, and the whole city does use Windy Hill at some time. So if you're just having awards, that doesn't do it. And this is way overdue to have a citizens' town hall meeting for the whole city. I can't stress it enough. And I don't, I don't see anybody picking a date to do it. And I hope this council considers that. And another point I wanted to make, that little park you have on Concord Road is very interesting. It's a nice little walkway. But since it's considered a park, it's the first park I've ever been in where you don't even have any park benches. There's no place to sit over there, which very surprised me. I mean, you just either walk and continue. So you oughta have someone look at putting a couple park benches in there where people can sit down and enjoy the scenery. And again, I'm waiting for this council to give me some feedback on term limits. I have heard nothing from anybody, and I'm sure the council has talked to constituents. They're very much in favor of this, and again, open government is asking their opinion on this issue. And again, Marietta did it, Kamrazwell's done it, and I'd like to see us have a referendum and have a yea and nay on it and go with the majority. And that's why we can get the citizens' input involved in government and break down this apathy, since we've only had 20% or less in the last four elections. It's time we ask people their ideas and thoughts. Please consider a town hall meeting so we can discuss this project on Windy Hill. Thank you.
Tajim Shiloh Evans of 2164 Gordon Circle. His topic is skate club. Is that Hunter Wright behind you?
Yes, sir.
Hunter Wright at 48 Beaver Point, Villarica, Georgia. It's the same topic, so y'all can, glad to have y'all.
Hello, Max, Max Bacon and council members, along with the community of Smyrna. Today, we'd like to introduce what we've been working on for the past year with our skate club idea. Pretty much what we wanted to do was get a skate park for Smyrna, so skaters around Smyrna and other, you know, children and adolescents like us can enjoy a skate park and a place to go while we continue to skate. We're here with our sponsor, Lorraine Cook, and other members of the skate club.
Y'all can stand up and come up if you'd like. This is unusual for citizens' input, but I know that I have, and I normally don't interact with folks when it's citizens' input, but I will make an exception because I've seen a couple y'all and spoken to a couple y'all. That y'all, I'll look like skateboarders. It's not a, it's not a bad thing, man.
Thank you.
But you got some sponsors, and you're here to ask us about a skate club or skate park? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If anybody's looking back at the sponsor like, come on up here to the microphone, just, and, and you know what? This is sort of odd because we just talked about a skate park not too long ago, within the last week or so. Not, we didn't know y'all were coming, but.
Right. We.
And you are?
I'm Lorraine Cook, and we spoke last year at the freshman, it was a Friday, it was the first week of school, we had a big freshman kickoff at Campbell High School.
Yeah.
Okay. So we spoke, and then I got these guys together, and I had a few of them as students, and we, I actually had them do all the work, so me, me talking is unusual for this crew, because they, they're pretty good at talking. We have been working, we wrote a proposal, we spoke with Richard Garland, Richard Garland, we had a meeting with him, and then Hunter and who else? Met with, oh, Tajim, met with, I guess, someone who was doing like a focus group for SPOLOST.
Right.
Okay, all right. And so we, we thought we would try to continue to keep the ball rolling. I mean, that SPOLOST vote would be 2018?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Right.
And so we thought if we do a little more footwork and show up here and you see us, that maybe we could get something going before they go to college.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, we have a pretty active group. We do have a few more members who come and go. There are a lot of kids who are skating in Smyrna and in the Campbell District and then the Osborne District as well. So we thought a community skate park would be something that would be really beneficial for these guys and girls.
Good day. You know, I'm gonna refer you to our city administrator, Ms. Jones, who I'm sure she's gonna refer you to Scott Andrews or City Administrator. But, I mean, I think you've, you're at the right time, at the right place even to, to let us know that there is interest out there in skateboarders, and, and for us to have a skate park, I think, would be great. And, but, but I see these guys up on Atlanta Road and sometimes skating through the village, which is, you're not supposed to, but I don't ever say anything. But I talked to somebody, and I don't remember which one it was. It was, yep. If you had a skate, what y'all look like? Who was it?
Probably Ali. He's a.
Ali, yeah, Ali was his name.
A renegade. He's not part of the crew. But we also do, we formed a club at Campbell High School, we do community service, so it's not, we don't skate around, I mean, we don't skate at school. We do, we're really more focused on being a help to the community.
Oh, I think we could, we could use the input from y'all to figure out what, because I don't think anybody up here is a skateboarder. So we could find out from y'all what we need to do, so. I guess it was your daughter that had, was on the losing Campbell High softball team. But yes, but thank y'all so much for coming up, and if you can get with Ms. Jones before the night's over, or Scott, you're gonna, you're gonna get it, and we'll get the ball rolling. But thank y'all very much. Now, Tajim Shiloh, you were the first to sign up, but you said nothing.
Well, I wanted to say, I just wanted her to introduce herself, but we, it's been a long time coming, and we definitely plan to get involved a lot into our community because we don't want it to just be taking no gift. We want to give back before we ask something of you. So we're taking these opportunities to come to city council meetings and work with our community to see what we can do for you. And, you know, when the time does come for us to start building this skate park, we wanna play a big hand in it, and we wanna help, because we don't want it to just be something that we push forth, we want it to be something that we all created as a community, as, you know, as Smyrna. And, you know, with Smyrna growing so much, we have the stadium that just came around and all of this stuff, and there are, skating is also a growing, you know, community. We have skate parks up in Kennesaw and in Atlanta, all, you know, very large communities. So as we, you know, I don't wanna say catching up to them, but as we're getting there and becoming such a great community, we wanna have an accommodating place for us, our skaters.
Good deal. Thank y'all so very much for coming up tonight, and we'll, we'll follow up on this, and we'll get some input and find out what, what we need to do.
Thank you.
All right, good deal. Thank y'all so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good deal. Very rarely do we have a group that comes up and says, look, we wanna give back before we, before we get, but that's pretty encouraging. Thank y'all very much. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, I'd close the meeting adjourned at 7:43.